Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on; your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat. The convener will call you when the relevant item is called. With members of the press and public, please not post messages in the meeting chat. Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat; otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the meeting chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I shall now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Lord Provost. Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Deputy Lord Provost Campbell.
Present.
Councillor Caddell.
Present.
Councillor Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor Flynn.
I'm here.
Councillor Hunter.
Present.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Councillor Rendall.
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts.
I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Present.
Bailey Sawyers.
I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Bailey Keenan.
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Apologies.
Thank you. Councillor McCready.
I'm here.
Councillor McCarvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
I'm here.
Councillor Mara.
Present.
Councillor Richardson.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey Scott.
I'm here.
Councillor Hay.
Present.
Councillor Scott.
Here.
Bailey MacPherson.
A good evening, present.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Councillor Murray.
I'm here.
Councillor Ross.
Apologies from Councillor Ross.
Thank you, that concludes the roll call.
Lord Provost, members of the council, there is one item of business this evening: the minutes for information and record purposes.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you, Lord Provost. That concludes the meeting of the City Council. The next meeting is the meeting of the Community Safety and Public Protection Committee. Thank you.
Okay, welcome to Community Safety and Public Protection. Arlene.
Thank you. Item one: Declaration of Interest. Are there any declarations?
No. Okay. Item two: Designated Police Commander. This is for noting.
I think there's not much really to add to this as it's been round all the groups, but certainly I think I speak on behalf of us all welcoming Phil to his post and I look forward to working with him over the coming months.
Item three.
Thank you.
Item three: Police Scotland Survey, Local Police Plan Review. This is for noting.
Again, this is just for noting, so we agreed on that? Thank you. That's the business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, convener. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee.
Thank you. Welcome to Neighbourhood Services, Arlene. Thank you. Item one: Declaration of Interest. Are there any declarations?
No. Item two: Contract for the Treatment of Food Waste. This is for approval.
This is to agree to the tender received under the Scotland Excel framework for the procurement of the treatment of food waste. This is to allow officers to get best value. The contract will run for two years with a 12-month extension option. Can this be agreed? Thank you, that's agreed.
Item three: Tenders Received by Head of Design and Property. This was previously agreed and for noting.
Sorry, hang on a second, Margaret's put a question mark in the chat. Margaret, did you want to ask something?
Yes, thanks, convener. I just wanted to make sure that the tonnage that was mentioned there in terms of the contract, that that is like the minimum amount and that if we do produce more, as we hopefully will set a target to do, it will still be accepted at the same sort of price as the contract's been agreed.
Okay. Mr Boyle, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, thanks, convener. Yes, I'm happy to confirm that is the case.
Is that okay, Margaret?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Arlene.
Item three: Tenders Received by Head of Design and Property. This was previously agreed and is for noting.
As Arlene said, purely for noting, so I think unless there's anything, we can move on to the next item.
Item four: Tenders Received by Head of Design and Property. This one is for approval.
Thank you. So, we have... We'll have a few tenders there. One, first one is for paper storage and repairs to the existing storage facility at March Banks. The next one is a repair to the retaining wall at Brody Ferry Road. Then we have window replacements at various addresses in Lynn Lathan, Pole Park Road and Whitfield, and the replacement of existing water storage tanks in the two multi-stores at Lochie. So I have a question from Bailey MacPherson first.
Thank you very much, convener. Firstly, I just wanted to briefly welcome the long-awaited window replacements at the flats in Pole Park Road. They're not in the best of state and that is very, very welcome. I just really wanted to just, and it's not for tonight and I'm not looking for the officers to necessarily come back, but I think it would be quite helpful if elected members were given an update on the strategy in relation to windows. I have been raising the issue of windows at various locations and in particular the Lochie estate for a lengthy period of time. And whilst I'm very pleased to see these in Whitfield, Lynn Lathan, and the Pleasance Development at Pole Park Road coming forward, I'd be very grateful if officers could perhaps give members of the committee an update on the strategy for windows and where developments across the city actually sit.
Yep, I'm sure we can do that. Is there an officer on the call? Mr Simpson, are you on the call?
Yes, I am, convener. I am happy to come back with something as requested by Bailey MacPherson.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Richardson.
Thank you, convener. Like Bailey MacPherson, I too, I'm really happy to see that the window replacement scheme is now up and running again and good to see that in Lathan we'll get some window replacement. As Councillor MacPherson said, it's basically needed in terms of, you know, preventing fuel poverty or helping to reduce it and also to reduce our own carbon footprint, et cetera. This is, I would think, got to be a priority at the council going forward and I'd like to see some kind of plan in terms of catch-up and to get good windows in in all the council properties that's required.
Thanks for those comments and I'm sure they're noted by officers and we can do that, just as we, as you say, we're catching up with programmes that were stalled, so if there's an update required, we can do that. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for officers or comments? No? Okay, I think that's the business then.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, colleagues. I don't think we've ever got to P and R quite so early in the evening, so hopefully that is a good sign of what's to come. I'll just move straight on to the agenda, Tracy.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest?
I can see a few hands, I think, have gone up. So, Councillor Malone, first of all. Charlie? You're on mute.
I've obviously got an interest in items three and six, which refer to leisure and culture and I'm a board member.
Thank you, and I'll take that as read for Christina and Will as well. Okay.
Member of the Drugs Commission from Kenland.
Thank you, and I think on behalf of Kevin and I, probably also worth mentioning in respect of the report, for we are both members of the ADP as well, is there anything else that I have missed? No. Okay, Tracy?
That takes us on to item two on the agenda, which is the minute of the Pension Subcommittee and Pension Board of the 8th of March. This is submitted for information and record purposes.
I'll take that as agreed unless there is anyone who wants to jump in. That's agreed.
Item three: Leisure and Culture Dundee Amendment to the Constitution. You are asked to approve the proposed change to the constitution as detailed in the agenda note.
Again, I think this is self-explanatory and in the words of Bailey MacPherson, eminently sensible, so is this agreed? Thank you very much.
Item four: Alcohol and Drug Partnership Self-Assessment Findings. This report is for noting.
This is obviously a very important report that sets out the findings of a self-assessment by the ADP of the progress that's been made in implementing the Action Plan for Change and the recommendations made by the Dundee Drug Commission. The process is included speaking with people affected by drug use, family members, carers, service providers and the workforce, so quite an all-encompassing bit of work that was undertaken there. And the evidence gathered, I think, demonstrates that there are significant improvements that have been made in some areas, but also shows there's a lot more work to do and I think we all have to recognise that the work that has been undertaken is certainly just the start and obviously in terms of the Drug Commission coming back together to review progress, that's another important milestone on the journey as we try and tackle this entrenched issue. The self-assessment's been submitted to the Dundee Drugs Commission to support their independent evaluation of the progress as well, so we will hear back from them, I'm sure, in due course and will report back thereafter. Amendments will also be made to the Action Plan for Change based on the self-assessment findings. The report also details additional funding by the City Council and the Scottish one and planned investment to support and accelerate actions within the Action Plan. And I think I probably speak on behalf of all of us when I say that we want to continue to explore how we bring in further resources, financial and otherwise, to help that work and to really tackle, as I say, the entrenched and difficult issue of drugs in the city. I've got a series of questions here, so I will invite Bailey Keenan first of all.
Thanks, convener. I do believe there's been some progress, like yourself. I suppose the issue is the very question that you raised within the statement you just made and that is in relation to investment and how we capture that into the city. So I think that the investment is needed and, you know, a lot of the things that we're applying for are short-term funded and a bottle of scat are going to approach as the government issues cash in that manner. And I'm wondering how we best, as a city council lobby, to address that issue, given that we've had staff retention issues within the Alcohol and Drugs Partnership. I think retaining staff's vitally important, but if people are seeing short-term funding, you could fully understand that if got a qualification that's worth its weight in gold elsewhere, then, you know, staff are going to tend to want to move to that mayor's stability and, you know, we've got a serious issue that we need to address. So staff retention, being able to keep people is something that we need to collectively look at and I would like to see officers, and ourselves indeed, obviously lobbying to overcome that with government. I'll leave that with you to make comment.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. You and I were both on the call of the last ADP and I think we speak with one voice when we say we absolutely need that long-term strategic kind of focus on this issue and that also requires long-term funding to ensure that we are clear not only that we can deliver on the action plan, but that we've got the means to deliver the action plan. So I absolutely agree with you. That was why 2.5 specifically was added to the recommendations, because I think funding is an integral part of the strategy. We can have all the recommendations we like, but the ability to deliver them, to fund additional posts and some of the projects that we've currently got in the pipeline is absolutely essential. And I know that through the work of others and led by Simon Little, who's on the call tonight, will continue to explore that. But can I give you an absolute assurance that both officers and myself will be lobbying incredibly hard, both through, you know, the vehicles of COSLA, but also directly through government ministers and of course representatives on the IGB. And I'm looking at Councillor Lynn in that regard, who I know wants to make a comment in a moment, so he might want to pick up the point. But I can give you an absolute assurance that this is a key focus for me personally as well as for the broader council and it will leave no stone unturned in making sure that we bring in the resources required to deliver the actions and save lives.
Thanks for that, that's clearly what we're looking for.
Thanks. I think Councillor Lynn was next, Ken.
Yeah, I completely agree with you on that, convener. I think one of your catchphrases, one of your favourite expressions is we must knock on every door in relation to getting money for the city for whatever. And I think absolutely we must knock on every door, as Councillor Keenan says, to make sure that we get the investment that we need in order to further improve services and create new services that reflect the need in the city. I really welcome this report, which is a further stepping stone on the way to eradicating the tragedy of drug deaths which we faced in this city for many decades. I think it's been a really thorough exercise, as detailed in section 4.4, which has consulted with a wide variety of agencies as well, as most importantly, those who have lived experience, whether they be people who have used drugs themselves or the family members who have cared for them and tried to help them through their troubles. As a result of this self-assessment process, I think the Action Plan for Change can now be adjusted to ensure that it is up-to-date as possible and reflects the needs here and now rather than the needs that we had when the action plan was first formulated. I think one of the most important factors in the journey we are on is that all stakeholders are equally committed to improving lives and preventing further deaths. And we've seen evidence of this right across the city, from the Dundee Partnership, which brings together a wide variety of agencies, the IGB, Police Scotland, who have been fantastic, and also of course NHS T side, who have a responsibility in this area too. At the start of this administration, I met with you, convener, and we agreed that tackling the issue of drug deaths should be a major priority for the coming council term. It was out of this that the Drugs Commission was established and we were the first local authority in Scotland to take this approach, which was also in advance of the National Task Force. We must, as a city, continue with this approach and I'm pleased that the commission will once again begin its work in terms of assessing progress later this week, looking at what is working well and what needs to work better for our citizens. It's important that our words and actions are backed by the financial support we need to effect change and as you say, the Scottish government have provided extra funding and also Dundee City Council have provided half a million pounds, a substantial sum for this coming year. And there's additional investment detailed at 4.7.2 in the paper. I'd also mention the additional support we've received to improve mental health services for those who have drug issues. That money came from the Cora Foundation, we've all heard about that quite a few times. And also of importance is the monies to trial, the Iceland project in two schools, which really importantly is all about reaching children, obviously of a young age, and preventing drug use or alcohol use to excess in later life. Finally, convener, I would like to say a wee word about tackling stigma, which is mentioned in the report. I think there are further 79,000 allocated to that. I still feel we have a problem with tackling stigma in Dundee, convener. Too often vulnerable people who are drug users are derided on social media and elsewhere and blamed for all their problems and blamed for lingering in the city centre and blamed for being out of it on the streets. I would plead, not just with the members of this committee, but with the people of our city, that we recognise that the vast majority of people with drug issues have experienced significant trauma and frequently in childhood, when of course we are all at our most vulnerable. There but for the grace of God are words which spring to mind and I hope that those in our city who abuse people who are down on their luck really change their attitude. So I commend this report, convener, thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Lynn, and excellent points made there in your contribution, so thank you very much. Councillor McGivern next.
Thanks, Chair. A question on 4.4 in the evidence gathering process. It mentions there the workforce survey, there was 59 responses in total. I'm just curious to know how far we cast that net, how many, I'm not sure myself personally how much, how many are in the workforce and indeed did we extend that to external agencies in the third sector when we did that survey?
Thanks very much for the question, George. I'll just invite officers to offer some clarification if they can at this point. Don't know who wants to come in. Diane?
Yes, I can come in on that one. I asked a question specifically, Councillor McGivern, and my understanding is it went out wider than just the statutory services but also to the third sector. It was done on the basis of cascade, so we didn't send it directly to named individuals because we wouldn't know that in terms of the wider organisation and people were invited to respond. So that was the number of staff that came through. If that was only statutory services, it would be about something like 90% of the staff who would have responded, so we're making the assumption that it came from wider than just our specialist services within the Health and Social Care Partnership.
That helped.
Just a supplementary, if you please. So could we stick a bog standard? So you mentioned there, Diane, 59 from a statutory workforce, 90 odd, so what are we looking at? Is it 59 or 300? Is it 59 or 100? What are we looking at here, sort of bog standard?
So it's really difficult to see what exactly those numbers would be. So for example, if we sent it to our sixth third sector staffing group, some services will have two or three staffs and will have more and it'll be how widely that's went. I think in terms of our nursing staff, we're probably, I can give you the exact, I can get the exact numbers for you in terms of the specialist services, the internal to the Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership, but it went out quite widely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, Councillor Malone next.
Thank you, convener. I guess it's more of a suggestion rather than a question, but I would like to comment on Councillor Lynn's comments. I found them very, very touching and very, very coherent and establish something that we all too readily know. Somebody who's a councillor for a ward that has serious issues in terms of drug use, we maybe know people who were friends at school who ended up on a different path from us. And it wasn't a different path because of deviance, it was a different path because circumstance. And I really appreciate Councillor Lynn's comments about people experiencing trauma and the stigma that's often attached to people who find themselves involved in drug use. There's also an issue that we need to think about, is the experience of people who live in communities that are blighted by drug dealing and the antisocial behaviour that accrues from that. And I think that's often something that we not necessarily overlook, but it's sometimes something that we need to connect with, I think, a bit more. I just wanted to basically say thanks to Councillor Lynn for his comments, but I only had a suggestion, which was basically on page 59, about the extension of the Naxalone training to different stakeholder groups. And I just wondered if we could maybe get an explanation beyond the police, who these groups are. I myself have been trained to give Naxalone injections and I'm a Red Cross qualified first aider. And I'm just wondering if we've, if there are more stakeholders that we can approach, particularly in the Red Cross first aiders, who've got, already got a toolkit of things that they can use, but whether or not they're involved in this project of getting Naxalone, you know, provisions out to the communities. So I would just maybe like an explanation of who else other than the police have been involved in this project.
Thanks for the question, Charlie. I'm sure officers can come back and provide some detail. I think it might be worthwhile, actually, Diane, just thinking about, you might not have all of the organisations in memory and if you do, I'd be very, very impressed. But perhaps a follow-up note that just details some of those organisations. I see you nodding, so I'm going to take it that you'll take up the latter offer rather than... Yeah, great, okay, thanks, Charlie. We'll have that circulated to all members because I think it's a really good point and actually it helps us understand the spread of that training across the city and how, you know, widespread it is. But great on yourself for taking up the opportunity and I know that a couple of elected members have been trained in that as well through other work that they've been doing, so it's fantastic that you're leading by example as well. So thanks for the question and we'll get that circulated. Next question is from Councillor Richardson.
Thanks, convener. As Councillor Lynn had said, you know, there's, it's been a major priority to tackle the drug deaths within Dundee and quite rightly so, because there is most obviously a need and it's good to see that there's been quite a bit of progress. However, I don't think this report reflects the needs in terms of the people suffering from alcohol abuse and the number of deaths there's been. There was a report the last week that said that in Scotland it was something like 1,190 people died from alcohol abuse in Scotland and, you know, those figures are now getting to a horrendous stage and no doubt will get worse as the figures come forward following, you know, the lockdowns and what have you. But if you look at the report that's before us, although it's Alcohol and Drug Partnership, the whole focus of this report and the whole self-assessment, and I understand it's going back to the Drugs Commission to update plans and what have you, but there's nothing in it about what's happening in the alcohol services. And I would ask you not to take your eye off the ball, that I think we've got a huge crisis coming forward and we can't ignore what's happening in terms of alcohol. It needs to have given the same kind of focus, the same kind of priority or we'll, you know, we could end up Dundee being one of the worst areas in Scotland again, in the news for all the wrong reasons. And I would hope that the services still exist where the, that reflect the need and part of that need is in alcohol services.
Great points made there, Margaret. I think Scotland's relationship with alcohol is one that we all know too well and actually it comes through other stats. So if you look at even, for example, some of the domestic abuse stats and the relationship and correlation between some of the activities around drinking, of course, we've seen some of the impact of measures like minimum pricing, but again, as you say, the impact... But again, as you say, the impact of COVID, people sitting at home, perhaps drinking more than they ordinarily would, is such an important issue. So absolutely, I can give you that assurance that we haven't sort of dropped the ball or lost focus on that. And I could see Simon little nodding as you are speaking there. So Simon, I don't know, as Chair of the ADP, if you want to perhaps come in and just comment on Margaret's remarks there.
I think they're extremely timely, Convenor. They were shocking figures published last week. And it is a danger that because we have such a focus on our current situation with drugs that we could lose sight of that. However, I'm very keen to remind you of certain positives that we have locally. We have an over-provision policy, for example, which is geared about making sure that the provision of alcohol is addressed in individual local communities. Over-provision has been linked with excess alcohol harms and actually Dundee was leading the way in adopting such a policy and actively is pursued through the licensing board. We are however keen to re-energise the alcohol brief interventions programme, which is led by NHS, T-side and community GPs etc. And the reality there has been that numbers have declined against performance in recent years. And again, alcohol brief interventions are recognised as an important intervention to start people addressing their alcohol harms. And we have been keen to get that refocused. That is something that we hope will be done very soon because we have allocated some money for a post to do that, but that post is not yet appointed. It has been a focus of mine to try and get that post appointed for some time, it has to be said. So yes, I think you're absolutely right to remind us of this. It's a very large charge and a charge that, to be honest, spreads across the whole of our communities, probably to a wider extent. And with COVID being the charge to the mental health and welfare of so many, we have to be very conscious that this could be an issue. We have been expecting numbers to rise as a result of the opening up to services and we see indicators that that's probably happening. So we are absolutely clear that we need to be focused in this area and not lose sight of it.
Thank you very much, Simon. I think the other important thing to see, Margaret, is, you know, I'm sure I speak again for Kevin and I, I'm trying not to speak for you too much, Bailey Keenan, but through the ADP absolutely has to be part of that focused effort across all of the work of the various stakeholders that are represented. It isn't, of course, just for the council, but it is such an important issue because in many respects, it's one of the last accepted taboos. We all perhaps know of someone or have a relationship with someone that perhaps, you know, suffers with alcoholism. And again, I think it's a really live issue for so many in the city that we need to keep that focus on. So I think, as Simon says, very timely point that you're making there. And I can see you've taken yourself off mute, so I'll just invite you back in.
Just to say thank you for that and to thank Simon as well, because it's good to have the assurance that, you know, it's not going to be forgotten about, it's not going to be the next crisis that comes down the line and that, you know, something will be put in place to help deal with what could potentially be, you know, larger numbers than what we're talking about in terms of drugs. So I'm happy to accept your assurances that you haven't dropped the ball, that you are keeping on top of it and that the services will be provided where to reflect the need. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. And I think that was the last question on this item. So thank you all for your contributions on that. It's clear that it's an important issue for all of us, so really valuable comments that you've made there tonight. So can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. We'll move on.
That takes us on to item five on the agenda, Joint City Plan and Council Plan Progress Support for 2020-2021. You have a report before you.
Thank you very much. The report provides members with an update on the progress on both the city plan and council plan. Obviously, the course of the last two years has been fairly difficult and some indicators will inevitably reflect that. But the summary of progress on the city plan shows that overall 67% of performance indicators have improved since the baseline in 2017, which I think is a very positive thing indeed. That, of course, makes us all question what happened to the other 33%. And I think our focus is rightly on ensuring that we continue to raise the bar and deliver on the ambitions and the targets set out in those plans. Forty out of the 70 measures for 2021 have been met or are within 5% of those targets. And again, I think, given everything that we've been experiencing over the last couple of years, that again shows a very positive direction of travel. Attention's now turning, of course, to preparing revisions to the city plan and the council plan for 2022, which will include the lessons learned from COVID-19. Hopefully, we'll be, you know, much further out of the crisis than we are at the present time. A number of activities are planned and/or underway to gather feedback from citizens, partners, members and employees in advance of drafting that council plan as well. And of course, it will come back to committee once that work has been undertaken. So I can see that there's a number of questions. I think Bailey McPherson was fastest finger.
Okay, thanks for that, Convenor. I would firstly say in a very positive sense, I think there's a massive amount of information in this and it's difficult to get that across in a very user-friendly way, but I think there's been a real effort to achieve that. And I think the layout of the performance scorecards is actually very readable. So, you know, I commend the officers for the way in which the presentation has been done. I have a couple of queries and they're actually around in the performance scorecards, rather, queries regarding a couple of performance indicators. The first, they're completely unrelated to one another. The first one is on page 139 of the substantive page numbers. I think it's 64 of the actual progress report itself. And it's about the number of online transactions. And I'm just really looking for a bit of an explanation. I don't doubt the stats, but what I found was really surprising was that the total number of online transactions in 2019-20 was 444,000, nearly 450,000, and it dropped to 382,000 in 2021. And I sort of found that relatively staggering because what happened in 2021 was, of course, the COVID health emergency. And I would have thought, if anything, our online transactions, given the circumstances, given the fact that, you know, a lot of facilities were not available face to face. I'm just really surprised to see that statistic. And I was just really wondering if officers could cast some light on why you think that could be.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Of course, there's always a danger of picking individual measures out because I'm not sure officers will always have the information to hand, but they might well this evening. Robert, I can see you've come off mute. Would you like to jump in?
Thanks, Chair. Unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that at my fingertips, but I will find out and circulate the information to Bailey McPherson.
That's fine. I fully understand because you could go through this and pick out any random thing. And, you know, it's not reasonable to expect, I never expect, that, you know, in these sort of circumstances, officers can immediately come back. So I probably answered my next question myself then, eh? But we'll try it anyway. And my question is less about the actual number that is quoted. It's in relation, I have to say, to percentage of residents who were satisfied with the cleanliness of streets. But I would like just a little bit more information, and again, it is up to come tonight, regarding where the statistic of 96% satisfaction comes from and what the direction of travel is at the moment. Because if I'm being perfectly honest, and without wishing to sound like a broken record and repeat everything I said about cleanliness of streets and the need for more street cleaners that I said at the budget earlier this year, I would say the number of concerns raised by constituents in the past year about the cleanliness of streets. Well, let's put it this way, there's 4% that are dissatisfied, they must all live in the West End ward and they must have at least contacted councillor McPherson at least four or five times. Because the volume I get of these sort of things is a lot. And I'm sure officers would testify to that. I pay tribute to them. A particular environment manager in the West, who, leaving aside the fact that he's an extremely nice and competent and able man, must get sick of the 43rd email of the week regarding a cleanliness-related issue. Now, so I would be grateful for some feedback as to how this has collated and what the direction of travel is. Because I sense the direction of travel hasn't been particularly great in the last 12 months. But that's not a criticism. I'm conscious of the fact that it's been very challenging for officers. I know the number of, for example, environment staff who've had to be off self-isolating and so on, understand all that. And I welcome the new initiatives in relation to side waste. You're never going to clean up streets if you allow black plastic bags on the street for seagulls to rip open. I think we all get that. And I would commend officers for the initiative about using community payback to clean wrong Euro bins, because that is a continual complaint. I still think there should be a mainstreamed policy in relation to that and indeed cleaning Euro bins and other bins themselves. But, and I reiterate my long repeated comment, that I think there's a need for more environment management staff on street cleaning. But what I would really like is some feedback, and not necessarily for today, about how the percentage of residents who are satisfied in street cleanliness has arrived though. Because I'm not saying I don't believe it, but I find it a little bit hard to believe if I'm being perfectly frank.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. I'll ask officers to come back on that specific point. I think if my memory is correct, which it may not be, but we have raised this issue on this specific matter and others previously. And I think the answer to that point was that the figures are derived from a survey that's taken every couple of years and informed in the intervening years by a smaller survey telephone and otherwise. But I could be wrong and I will defer to those with superior knowledge. So Elaine, can I bring you in?
Thank you very much, councillor Alexander. I think you're right. I think it's derived from the citizen survey, but I'm happy to do a little bit more work around that and circulate that to elected members. Just to say that staff are working really hard. I'm grateful for Bailey McPherson's comments in relation to the work that the staff have been doing through the pandemic and we are working really hard to recover from the COVID situation and get back up to speed as quickly as we possibly can.
I'm grateful for that. I sort of knew it was a citizen survey. I've always doubted the value at a local level of the data because the numbers in an LCPP area are frankly so small. And I think, and it's anecdotal and I don't deny it, but I think the public out there will pick up the telly and see the number of complaints about the cleanliness of streets. But that said, I completely agree with Mrs Verlaine about the superb staff who do go the extra mile. And there's a volume of this, isn't there? There's a real volume of this. But at the end of the day, we do not want a reputation for dirty Dundee. I'm not saying we are, I'm just saying it's vital that we keep our streets as clean as possible. And as I say, just like Elaine, I would like to thank the staff for all their efforts.
Thanks very much for your comments, Bailey McPherson. And your 43 emails, I'm sure, are keeping all of our officers very busy on top of the rest of us. So I think it's a well-made point. I think we're all very conscious of the challenges for that staff complement. And I know through discussions that I've had recently with Tony Boyle, and I'll invite him to offer comment in a moment. At one point over the last couple of months, we did have 35% of staff off. So clearly that has an impact and dealing with the backlog as well as the current challenges, that inevitably will see some challenges. So I think from my discussions, officers are certainly minded to get back on top of that to ensure that we don't get the reputation that you referenced, Bailey McPherson. And I think we're all in agreement on that front. But Tony, can I just invite you in?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Yeah, I think you've already summed up. I size the executive director. We're really keen to get back to some form of normality. We've been significantly impacted by the impact of COVID voided absence on top of normal sickness absence, as it were. And also, at this time, we've had a number of staff who've worked over 18 months without much leave, so we've had to give some staff time off. I've got a range of actions what we're working on just now to try and redeem this situation and taking on board some of the points that Bailey McPherson has already alluded to in terms of community payback and a whole range of other improvements we will put forward over the coming weeks and months to make a difference. My understanding also is that those figures do come from the citizen's survey, but I'm happy to go away and provide Bailey McPherson with a more definitive update.
I'm grateful for that. Of course, it won't stop me trying to move for more staff in the budget next year, just as I did this year, but there you go. But no, I am grateful to Mrs Verlaine and Mr Boyle for their feedback. It is appreciated.
Thanks, Bailey McPherson. And thanks for the heads up on your budget. If you want to give us any further snippets, then please drop me an email. But thank you very much for your questions and I will follow up with Bailey Keenan now.
Thanks, Convenor. Hopefully, it's going to be a marvellous night. You spoke for me endlessly in the last item on the agenda.
It's nice to know we're on the same page, Shirley.
I know, without a doubt. And here's me thinking exactly the same as Bailey McPherson when it comes to street cleaning. And then I see, given the complaints that I receive and my colleagues receive, that we would be hitting that kind of mark. But officers are actively working to address it. I think the report itself, you know, does hit some things that are happening, but it throws some challenges in our direction. I think the revenues department or our advice services that have managed to deliver way beyond the budgeted sort of levels of maximising income is to be commended. And I know that that's a service that had been through this COVID period really under pressure with the amount of extra work that we've received from government to do. But there is some things within the report that I think are real challenges that we need to sort of face up and I would probably like some comments from officers on that. On page 23 of the report, it makes reference to jobs in tourism. And from 2019 to 21, we're down 1,600 jobs. And that would have me questioning, you know, how has the furlough scheme no managed to support some of the jobs in tourism within the city? And I'm wondering if officers have got any comment to make on that. And indeed, how do they see the tourism industry in the city pick back up to that kind of level? You know, given that, you know, we're setting targets to bring attractions to the city and we clearly want to bring people into our hotels. It's something that we really need to do. The other issue is in relation to the number of houses that were built. And there was only 27 houses built and we target for half 200. I would like a comment from officers in relation to that and when do we think we'll be back on stream? And do we think that we'll be making up the numbers that have lapsed within the few years that, you know, 161, one year, 27 the following, as to whether we'll make that up? And perhaps even a comment about the additional 6 million that Labour managed to put into the housing budget to make sure the houses were built or purchased? And what have we done when we've seen them coming on stream? Given that my email is full of individuals looking to be rehoused, and I'm sure that other councillors are exactly the same. The other comment I would like to make and get a feel from officers is that in relation to page 35 on the report, where it mentions those in care at 65, and that these numbers from 2019 to 21 have went up by 11.42%. And I'm really looking to see whether we're predicting that going forward, what we're predicting over the next few years and how much additional money comes from government to support the needs of the individuals that we're looking after in their homes.
Thanks very much for your questions, Bailey Keenan. Quite comprehensive, so I'll just invite officers to comment. Robin Presswood on the call. So Robin, can I defer to you for the first question on hospitality? Robin, are you there? It was a rhetorical question, I meant come in.
Speaking for me again, there could be an error.
Okay, if Robin, I can see him listed, but perhaps he's having some difficulties. Looking at some development colleagues, do we have Greg on the call? Greg O'Hamilton?
Convenor, I don't believe that Gregor is on the call. So if it's okay, if we can move on to the other questions, then I'll try to get hold of Mr Presswood to see whether or not he's having some technological problems.
Thank you very much, Greg. Okay, we'll move on to the next question. So I think David, David Simpson, if you want to come in on the house building question?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Yeah, it's been really challenging and it continues to be really challenging and the figures kind of bear that out. So I'm not trying to sugarcoat this. I think COVID has had a significant impact on house building in the city. And that's not just us, that's all our partners in the ship as well. We have regular ship meetings with developing partners and we're all reporting the same. significant impact due to the major shutdown of construction industry for four months during lockdown. And even when sites started to open up again, you know, significant hurdles in terms of social distancing, staff having to self-isolate. So basically, projects running at lower than capacity. We're continuing to monitor that closely with our partners and in a regular contact with the Scottish government. But we are almost getting to a perfect storm situation, where we're now starting to see some impact from Brexit as well, with supply of materials and supply chains. So none of these are excuses. And I hear Bailey Keenan's questions about, you know, when are we going to be back on stream? It's really hard to predict, because we're dealing with some things that are global markets, not just local issues, or at least national issues. We would hope to pick it up once things get going again across the board with all our partners. There's a lot of properties that are delayed going on site. There's lots of properties that are now going on site. We're obviously a bit behind. So what I don't want to do is to overpromise tonight and then under-deliver. But we are working this problem quite hard behind the scenes to make sure we do as much as we can. The second question, but related question was about the £6 million additional resource. But we have looked at that very carefully, and we're still working that problem at the minute about how do we deliver that additionality that that £6 million is there for? We're working through whether there's additional sites we can bring on board. So additional bits of land that are in our ownership or we can acquire. So we're still working that. But we're also trying to work out the bones of an open market acquisition programme, so we can put some of that money into buying properties. I was going to say off the shelf, that sounds a bit bland, but buying properties rather than building them. So that's still work in progress. We need to get the criteria for that right, so that we acquire the properties that are needed for people on the waiting list. So I'm happy to keep elected members appraised on how we're getting on with that as that develops. But it's work in progress at the minute.
Thanks, David. That's helpful.
I would be appreciative if we had had some level of focus and target set on, you know, some of these things. And I understand that officers kind of deliver that on a call like this this evening. But it'd be good for to have some level of information coming back to councillors, just for the point of view of, you know, 27 is a long way short of 200. And, you know, having additional money that were there, that's there and available to spend and not putting it on the ground, either keeps somebody a job or otherwise. But, you know, I think for the point of view of trying to get people into the homes, very much as Mr Simpson says, that is needed. I'd like to see some level of focus, even how they'll trickle on stream, if no, you know, hit the ground with a splash, because we're going to see that money coming on and on. You know, because, you know, I think that we really need to do something to address homelessness in the city, and address those on the waiting list with aspirations of moving elsewhere. Because one move will create two or three moves within the housing market within Dundee.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. Thanks, David, for your response there as well. I think there is absolutely a focus. And I know there's been joint work undertaken between David's team and, of course, city development, looking at some of those issues in terms of procurement, the impact of Brexit, but also some of the other practical considerations for building houses, like sewage and water and other constraints related to some of the sites. So I think what's been clear is that there is an ambition there. And obviously, the administration has put in some significant resources, supported by Scottish Government funding, to really ramp up the building process. Unfortunately, circumstances haven't allowed us to push forward with that. And as you say, the additional 6 million is really welcome. But if that has, or if that is majorly impacted as a result of other outside factors such as Brexit, then we get less bang for our buck, so to speak. So I think we've got to look across those issues and ensure that all of us are reassured, I suppose. I certainly am from the conversations I have had with officers that David and his team are really focused on this work and trying to deliver what we all want to see. Because ultimately, it's not just our collective ambition, it's officers' ambition to reduce the housing list and to reduce the number of people that are waiting for appropriate accommodation. And there's been a huge focus as well, it's fair to say, on things like wheelchair accessible housing in recent years. And that's really, excuse the pun, but ramped up again over the last couple of years because of additional investment that's been put into the Strategic Housing Investment Plan and contributed by the Scottish Government's funding pot. So Derby Street and Alexander Street in particular, I think, are good examples of some of the progress that's been made. I think the only thing I didn't mention, and this is from my, sorry, I'm going to go back in time and become convener of housing for a moment. So forgive me, Anne, which is, house building also doesn't neatly fit into a financial year. So I think, you know, I'd hoped that whilst we see that 200 target being met every year, if it's 400 next year, David will still be happy. So don't worry about that. It does fluctuate. But I think we've heard your comments, Bailey Keenan, and certainly there's a continued focus by officers. I believe that we now got Mr Presswood on the call. So I'll go back to your original question. Robyn, did you hear the original question, first of all?
No, unfortunately, I was on a call, convener. So my apologies for that. I had another phone call came in.
Well, I shall let you off for that. But the question was really just in terms of the impact on the job numbers within the report related to the hospitality sector and the significant drop in spite of the financial support that's been available through the UK government-supported scheme. And just asking officers, I think this is a fair summary, Bailey Keenan, what action is being undertaken to assess that more fully and also engage with the sector to see what support is required going forward? So if you can comment more generally on that?
Many thanks. In terms of the decline in the job numbers, I anticipate that's because although existing employees were covered by the job protection, the job retention scheme, new employees wouldn't have been. So the hotels and hospitality businesses wouldn't have taken new staff on. And as I'm sure members are aware, there's very high turnovers within this sector. So there would have been a large decline. I think the other thing is that although tourism and hospitality are counted the same, in fact, they're very different sectors. And there's a long-standing, ongoing decline in the pub trade in particular, which will mask any growth in the tourism sector. In terms of what we're doing, we do engage with the sector through the Tourism Leadership Group, which has now been well established, with industry chair and representatives of each of the key industry sectors. So there will be further dialogue with them about how we can support them in growing the sector back post-Covid.
Thanks very much. Bailey Keenan, are you satisfied with that response?
I'll discuss it further with Mr Presswood, hopefully.
Thanks very much. Okay. And the final question, I think, was probably for Mr Clancy Paul, in respect of care numbers?
Looks like Vicky's trying to answer.
I think it's probably the Health and Social Care Partnership, councillor Alexander.
Thank you very much. Keep me right. Vicky, apologies.
Thanks for that. And thanks in terms of pointing out that obviously quite a lot of the indicators within the report are reflecting the year 1920. For many of us, that feels like a bit of a different lifetime now, because certainly it's pre-pandemic. Good news is we should have validated data available quite soon. So I'm happy to share that update with the meeting that will show a change in many of the indicators that are represented within this report. But I think it's also fair to say that the pandemic itself has really shifted the balance of care, and particularly those who are in receipt of either health or care at home, particularly from the outset of the pandemic, where there were risks associated with hospital admissions and hospital-based treatments, but also risks associated with care homes as well. We have seen an exponential increase in the demand for us to support people's care needs within their own homes. So we expect to see quite a significant amount of change in that particular indicator. And we'll be happy to report on progress against that. I think it's also really important to say, though, that we've undertaken almost the lion's share of health and social care activity within the community setting throughout the pandemic period, all for very good reason. Not all of that, I think, will be represented through our traditional indicators. A lot of activity has been commenced. A lot of new pathways have been formed throughout the pandemic. And they don't necessarily yet feature in the way that we count activity or we performance manage episodes of care. So to that extent, we may have to develop our reporting arrangements in the future to fully reflect both the activity that we're now undertaking as a Health and Social Care Partnership, but the care needs which we're now supporting in a community setting. So we'll obviously come back to the IGB, but also happy to come back to a future Policy and Resources Committee along those lines.
Thank you very much, Vicky. I think that'll be appreciated. Bailey Keenan, do you want to come back?
Yeah, I suppose, Vicky, I was looking for some indication as to whether we see that numbers growing, because 11.4% over that three-year period is significant. Do we see another three-year period of that similar growth? Or have we seen potentially more, as you tell, with those new figures coming out? And how does that money come to service that? And I suppose now that you've said we've taken more into community as opposed to hospitals, is the hospital set aside money delivering back out within the community?
So I think, without having the kind of validated data in front of me, without shadow of a doubt, it's much, much more. And that's a combination of factors. It's not just because there's now a demand line for people who want to have their care needs be provided in their own homes, because they see that as the safest option. It's also just to do with the demographic change and the increase we've seen in frailty, particularly post-pandemic as well. So I think the increase in figures will be much, much more than the trajectory that we've seen so far and we've experienced across the partnership. Some of that data and information is now being shared with Scottish Government. We are data light when we compare ourselves to the acute sector. So there is a conversation to be had about future investment and whether the resources actually follow that shift in the balance of care as well.
Thanks very much, Vicky.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Okay, I think it was councillor McCready next.
Thanks very much, convener. I wanted to draw attention to pages 127, 130, and to look at the recycling figures. I have raised this in the Service Committee before, and I recognise that the urban environment of Dundee presents many, many challenges on recycling. And I also recognise the way in which the pandemic hit those figures for last year. And I'd want to put on record my recognition, and I'm sure, hopefully, the committee's recognition, that waste management staff were key workers who were out and about collecting their bins when many of us were still working from home, out and about when others were not going out and about. So I think, you know, we need to recognise that, recognise that these services are important. And I think, you know, the pandemic, I think, showed that there are many things that this council does, and all councils do, that are essential to living in a civilised society. And, you know, collecting their bins is one of those things. So I'd like to pay tribute to those staff that made that happen, even throughout a pandemic. But I suppose, according to the statistics that are here, the percentage of household waste recycled or composted in 2020, 21 was 33%, a decrease from 38.4% the previous year, and well below the target, which was 48% for 2020, 2021. I think by 2025, Scottish Government expects Dundee City Council to, and all councils, to more than double that percentage, to I think 70%. So I think we're faced with a bit of a dilemma here. Excuse me, convener, because I think there is little point in unattainable targets. But we all know that there's a climate emergency, which this council has declared. We all know that we must do more to protect the environment, we must do more to promote recycling. So I suppose my question, again, to some extent, is what are we going to do to reach the Scottish Government target? And also, are we convinced that the measures that we are taking are actually going to help? You know, I think people need to behave responsibly around their own rubbish and around their own recycling. But will the plan to stop taking side waste actually help these figures? You know, are we convinced that it will not lead to more fly tipping as, you know, the comments page in the Evening Telegraph was mentioned earlier? I think if you read that, you might think it will lead to fly tipping. I think we need to be convinced that that's not the case. So I also think, as others have said, convener, I think the officers are doing their best with the limited resources they have in order to keep our city clean and improve recycling. But do we need to look at making sure that they've got more resources, that we have an actual plan that will get us there, if we are serious about getting to that 70% recycling within the next few years? Because, you know, at this moment in time, that is quite a big leap. And I think, you know, we need to take that seriously. And we need to look at, you know, what we need to do, whether it is, you know, if it's, you know, clearly, it's around resources and it's around people's behaviour. But we need to look at what we need to do to make that happen, convener. Thanks.
Thanks for the comment, councillor McCready. I think your point is well made. Clearly, the aspiration is to significantly increase that recycling rate, because it's far, far from where we would want it to be. I think, again, I think we're all on the same page with that. And given the climate emergency, but also just given the essential need for us to recycle more, then that is an important part of work. The phrase, "you can lead a horse to water, but you can't force it to drink" does come to mind, I think. You'll know what I mean when I talk about that. There is an action plan that's in place. We have previously considered the Service Specific Action Plan, which details some of the actions. And perhaps would be useful, Tony, if we could recirculate that after the meeting, just to remind us all, I suppose, because we obviously discuss a wide array of things over the course of these committee meetings. I think certainly from the conversations I've had with the convener, deputy convener, and the senior management team, there is a real focus on this issue, because we all realise how important it is. There is, of course, much more to do by way of education and encouragement, as well as implementing the policy decisions that we made a couple of years back, so sideways specifically. I think if you look across the board of the main cities in particular, so, you know, it won't take you more than one minute to find similar comments and similar views of Edinburgh City Council, Aberdeen City Council, Glasgow City Council, because we're all dealing with and contending with the same issues, particularly in those built-up areas. I think we've got a number of challenges, or greater challenges. Part of that stems from the fact that if memory serves me correctly, 51% of properties in the city are tenemental or flatted in one way, shape or form, which gives rise to some very specific challenges that perhaps aren't as acute in some of the other cities. But I know the officers are working on that as well. There's also investment underway in ensuring that the facilities that are available are up to standard. So I walked along Dixon Avenue, for example, today in councillor Smith's ward, and noticed that there has been an improvement in terms of the recycling facilities provided to those tenements there. So I think it's part of an ongoing series of actions. It's not anything in isolation. And I did mention, I think, previously, perhaps, when we were discussing the service plan, pester power is also quite important. So I know from the homework that my four-year-old brought home in terms of asking me to monitor my food waste for a week, it was a real eye-opener, actually, and quite scary. And I know that from the information that we've circulated fairly recently, 35%, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Tony, but 35% of the waste that goes into a general waste bin tends to be food that can be used and recycled in a different way. So I think a big part of it is education. But of course, we need to move forward with some rapid policy changes in order to ensure that we're going to start reaching those targets. And I think because of the work that we're undertaking now, that we'll see us moving closer and closer towards that target and hopefully exceeding it. But I realise that I have spoken at length here, and I should again defer to the experts. So Tony, can I invite you to talk?
Yes, thank you, convener. Again, a lot of the issues have already perhaps been touched on. But yeah, we are pretty significant in that we're a city authority. And like other city authorities, we have unique challenges around the make-up of housing, for example, which is, you know, presents its own set of challenges. But we've set out quite clearly in the Waste Strategy Action Plan, a five-year plan from 2020 to 2025, which actually has got 41 specific actions which we're going to take forward. It's pretty clear that the pandemic has had a significant impact on the progress we'd like to have made over the last 15, 16 months. However, members should recall that we took these actions and indeed the policy and objectives that support those actions to committee and gained their support, which I'm thankful of. But we've got a clear policy for moving forward, set against a backdrop, a national backdrop that's evolving. And there's now emerging legislation coming along the lines of deposit return schemes and extended producer responsibility, which will actually contribute in reducing the amount of waste that goes into the waste stream, which will obviously have a knock-on, significant positive impact in what we're doing. But there is a 70% target. It's an aspirational government target. It's an aspirational government target. I think the national target just now in Scotland's, sorry, the national average in Scotland just now is about forty four percent. We're shy of that. We were making significant progress ahead of the pandemic. I'm confident now as we move out of the pandemic, we'll make further progress. And some of the actions that have been detailed by both yourself, Convenor and councillor McCready around the contamination policy, additional bins policy and side waste are the step changes that we need to introduce to make that change. Quite simply, just now we're sitting in the mid thirties to late thirty percents. We need to have more significant change taking place within households, with residents. That significant behavioural change is required to make that difference. These policies that we're talking about introducing just now, side waste, additional bins, have been introduced in just about every other local authority in Scotland. And it's now our turn to step up to the plate as an authority to do the same. Anywhere they've been introduced, they've seen a significant improvement in the overall recycling rate. And aligned to that, Convenor, you had mentioned that we are actually also in dialogue with Zero Waste Scotland around a whole range of actions to try and further improve the offer we give to residents around, you know, improving things like the household waste recycling centres, for example. And even internally within our own service operation, around looking at improving the route surveying that we're doing and the route monitoring and also, you know, smart monitoring. So there's a whole range of initiatives we're involved in. I suppose going forward, the next six, twelve months, we will also focus on that crucial issue around education, both with schoolchildren and also out in the local communities, trying decipher for a lot of people what is confusing about what they recycle and how to recycle. So we'll be moving forward on those initiatives. But overall, Convenor, forty one actions contained within a five year plan. And I'm confident we're going to make further progress on that going forward.
Thanks very much, Tony. And if, again, we can just have that recirculated, just to ensure that everybody's got a handy copy of those actions. Councillor McCready?
No, I think that's helpful. But I mean, I think, you know, we do need to see progress on it. And I think, you know, if Scottish Government has this aspirational target, you know, they need to give us the, they need to help as well with giving us the tools to help us make that happen. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Go to councillor Duncan next.
Thanks, Convenor. Just probably quite a brief question, hopefully. Just with regard to page one hundred and thirty five of the report, mention is made of forty percent progress towards the bloody ferry community wider the extension project. Now, something that obviously myself and a number of the residents are really enthusiastic to see brought to fruition. And although I do appreciate that, you know, Covid has obviously impacted just about everything, you know, the last year and a half. I'd just be keen for details, possibly not tonight, but you know, when available of what does the sixty percent still to be accomplished? What does that consist of? And what would the timescales involved be?
Thanks very much for your question, Craig. I'll ask officers to follow up with you. I think mainly it will be due to the financing because you'll remember that there was a significant financial ask associated with that and fundraising was an important part. And previously, at the behest of councillor Curdell, the administration did include additional funding within the capital plan to ensure that that project could move forward, which is probably why we're sitting at forty, not twenty percent. However, there is still a long way to go. So I'll ask officers to provide you that detail after the meeting and to the other ward members. And because I think that's probably useful to have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the last comment on this item is councillor Malone.
Yeah, I don't want to prolong this, but we've had a discussion about aspects of cleanliness within our communities. And I think it would be amiss as a councillor for the Locky Ward. I'm delighted that councillor Smith's ward has got extra recycling facilities. And I hope that gets extended to councillor Malone and Mara's wards as well. But that was a cheap shot, Convenor. But I do have genuine concerns. You're a resident of the area, you must see what I see. There is a crisis of cleanliness in parts of the city that need to be addressed and tackled. There is fundamentally, it's obvious there is a capacity management issue here. And there's areas in the wards where we do have to investigate quite significant quite quickly and look to significant investment increasing the capacity. I've also got a little bit, I listened to Bailey McPherson, I've got some disagreements with Bailey McPherson, which is on this issue would kind of probably seem odd, but I think that, first of all, Bailey McPherson, it's not the four percent, it's just not in your ward because my mailbox is full of pictures of rubbish being strewn across streets in parts of the ward. But I think that the black, sorry, the side refuge, I think that that's immensely right now, I listen to officer Boyle say that there's been steps made. And I'm sure he's going to answer this question in the way I expect him to answer it, that we have to deal with this very sensitively. When that was announced, I walked up Burnside and I counted twenty black bins with multiple side waste beside them. Whose bin do you determine you're going to put the black bag back into? So I'm sure there's going to be a degree of kind of flexibility and a degree of kind of wisdom that's going to be applied to that. But I really think that what we need to do, I think the ninety six percent figure. If you were to ask me about the cleanliness in my street, I'm very fortunate. I've got all the recycling bins I need and we use the recycling bins. But I know of areas where people have been told by council workers to dump stuff in the black bin because it's the only bin they've got when they want to recycle. So I think what we need to do is have a discussion with community groups and communities to find out what the pressure points are. Because some of the pictures I could circulate today, if I wanted to, are absolutely horrific. I'm getting reports of bearmen, which I predicted years ago. And whilst I appreciate the fact that the pandemic and the work that council staff have been trying to do under extremely challenging circumstances is there. This problem was there before we had the pandemic. The crisis of cleanliness, I pointed out in two thousand and seventeen, and I was told I was being alarmist, is there, it's evident in many communities within the city. And this is not, this is not about blame. This is just about, can't we get together, look at the experience, the lived experience of people within our communities and say, what can we do about a waste management strategy that tackles both antisocial behaviour? But also an understanding and appreciation in some areas of the city, there is a complete lack of capacity for people to dispose of their refuge.
Thanks very much, councillor Malone. A couple of things to pick up on specifically in reference to what you were talking about. I think it's important that we don't lose sight of the context and you acknowledged that, but I think the fact that at one point in time, a third of the staff were off due to the pandemic does have an impact. And of course, the backlog that, please don't interrupt if you've just taken yourself off mute though, has an impact in terms of dealing with not only the backlog. I think coupled with some of the challenges in terms of euro bins and the dumping of rubbish next to them in particular, I've noticed extensively in your ward and councillor Maris and councillor Smith's ward and councillor Ross's ward, I apologise for that oversight, that there are issues there. And I think from experience and from discussions, part of the problem is now that those issues are more visible and I've referenced this fact previously, whereas they might have been dumped at the back green area or in the communal stairwell, which was commonly an issue in terms of fire hazards. They're now being dumped in a more visible location next to euro bins. That doesn't take away from the fact that I think we've acknowledged tonight and officers have acknowledged that there are issues that they're looking at and dealing with. And I think as part of that, you'll remember that there was also additional investment, both in terms of capital investment, but also in rapid response teams. And I know that officers are deploying that as is required. And from the comments that I've heard tonight, it seems that when elected members have raised issues, they're acted upon fairly swiftly. And I think you yourself acknowledged that as well. So I don't think I'm taking away from any of the comments you made. I think we absolutely acknowledge that we need to get on top of, and there is a wish to get on top of that. And I think from Tony's comments tonight, he's clearly focused on reducing his workload in terms of his inbox from just councillor Malone and Bailey McPherson, it seems, never mind the rest of us. But Tony, do you want to come in and add anything to what you said earlier before I invite councillor Malone to come back?
Thank you, Convenor, and thank you to councillor Malone for his observations, which I completely understand and agree. There's a whole range of issues, as you've alluded to, Convenor, that we do need to get on top of. We cannot understate the impact that Covid has had on the overall ability to provide a full workforce over the last eighteen months. It's been significant. We're coming out of that and we are starting to already see a positive difference on that. And it will take maybe a number of weeks before we see that in every community, in every neighbourhood in the city. But we're laser focused on that, Convenor, and making that change and getting there. Some of the ephemeral issues that have come up around euro bins, I can give an assurance to committee, we're looking at that as well. We're looking at capacity of these euro bins, we're looking at the condition of them. And we've got a hotspot survey actually underway on that. A whole lot of these issues actually lead back to, as well as some of the service and delivery level improvements that we need to make as a service, that also involve absolutely residents working hand in glove with ourselves. And councillor Malone asked about the sensitivity by which these things will be handled and give an absolute assurance that that will be the case. This is about us all working together, but it's also about pointing out to residents when they need to step up to do their bit. And I'm probably fortuitously, Convenor, I can advise that a forthcoming committee will be bringing a refreshed version of the Pride Plan, Take Pride in Your City. And it was my intention to arrange our members' beef in the next four or five weeks before that goes to committee to give members an opportunity for us to debate many of the things we've discussed tonight around street cleansing, specifically that and waste management recycling and also the role of individuals, residents and businesses in making a difference to our city.
Thanks very much, Tony. I'll invite councillor Malone back in in just a second. But just to add, in terms of, you'll recall that there was one point one million pounds of additional revenue provided by Scottish Government. And we proposed that one of the posts that were created as a result of that was a specific post in Environment which was focused on community engagement. And I think your point on community engagement is a really important one. And I would hope that would really add something to the engagement that already goes on by staff members. But I'll invite you back in and then I'll let the last word be with the convenor.
No, it's just to thank Tony for the explanation. And can I just say, any time we've had to contact the cleansing department about an issue, the action is expedited. I mean, it's almost instantaneous. So I'd like to congratulate Tony and his staff on the work they've done in very difficult circumstances. But I just felt it was amiss that we didn't recognise that these problems were there before the pandemic and that and Tony, quite rightly, alluded to that there needs to be an investigation in a capacity issue. So I'm really kind of I'm happy that we are going to start looking at capacity in certain areas. And your own comment, Convenor, about the need to engage with community groups. There was one thing I didn't mean to say that I forgot, and I hope you don't mind me just adding, it's not a controversial thing, I don't think. But when we're talking about the use of community payback, I hope that's a short term issue. Because I've seen some of the work the community payback teams have done in enhancing communities. And it's absolutely brilliant. I wouldn't want people to think they're being used as a reserve army of labour to help clean up the city. So I would just like that to be, I would just like that to be noted, that that's my, that I hope that's not going to be the position going forward.
Thanks, Charlie. No, absolutely. I think we've all got examples of projects in our own ward where community payback have assisted. And, you know, it's that range of activities that's important, not just supplementing, I suppose, in terms of your description, but it will help in the intervening period. So thanks very much. And I will defer to my colleague, the convenor, councillor Rendall.
Thanks, John. Yeah, it was just a few comments to add to your own and to those of Tony. And to reassure councillor Malone, that obviously we are looking at a whole host of what might seem relatively small things, but all these small things will add up to a big change. And it is a behavioural change that we're trying to affect in people, to try and get them to understand why we need to do this. So, you know, that's a difficult thing to do, to completely change the way that some people might think about how rubbish is dealt with. It's not something they've had to really think about seriously until fairly recently. But things are changing and we are looking at all sorts of ways, as I say, of helping out. And in the short term with this, the bit of the crisis that we had due to all the reasons that you've spoken about, but also in the longer term. And I do agree with Charlie, that the community groups and speaking to community groups about recycling, the things that can and can't be recycling, we're working on that as well. And in fact, I've got one of the officers coming along to my own coal side forum this week. I know that the Harbour Council have asked for the same and that the officers are glad to do that. So any community council that wants an officer to come along to a forum group meeting or at another time, just ask Tony and that'll be arranged. So just to reassure you on that front as well. And I do think that the relaunch of the, well, not relaunch, but just putting more of an emphasis on the Take Pride in Your City campaign will help. And I know that a lot of local people are doing their own litter picking and community groups are doing it as well. So we're all wanting the same outcome from this. It's just how we go about it and how we best affect this behavioural change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A good point to finish upon that item. So I can take that as this item agreed. Thank you. Tracy?
That takes us on to item six on the agenda, Leisure and Culture Dundee Performance and Impact Report for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Well, clearly the stats in here are not necessarily where we would have liked them to be. But the small matter of the Covid pandemic has really had a significant impact on leisure and culture's ability to deliver everything that they do. But I think it's also important to highlight some of the specific references to the important and crucial role that leisure and culture has played in Dundee's response to the pandemic, not least the Mass Vaccination Centre and some of the other physical wellbeing activities that have been taking place in our communities as well, a role that will become even more important as we progress with the recovery. Sections five point two sets that out in great detail in terms of those achievements. And again, the press release went out today acknowledging that because I think in many ways, we don't often acknowledge the significant contribution enough of leisure and culture. So hopefully this report does that justice. And with that said, I see that councillor Keenan has a motion. Now, I'm going to go to Bailey McPherson's question first and then I'll come back to Bailey Keenan. So Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor. And I'm grateful for this report and in particular, all the bullet points of, you know, Covid impacts and recovery plans, because there's a lot of detail in there of as to how leisure and culture has tried to meet the challenges, because there is absolutely no doubt leisure and culture, given the type of services that it runs, significantly hit by the health emergency. I actually have a, I should actually say as well, in a positive sense, I see, only because I saw it on my Twitter feed, that, you know, communities across the city have been asked for their input on the situation going forward. And I commend leisure and culture Dundee for doing that. I think that's a really, really sensible thing to do. Can I just ask some very specific points about libraries and the Olympia going forward? Because there's so many people ask and I've been in touch with Mr Dobby in the past and no other members have. Can we have some indication? And I understand nothing is certain given the pandemic. But to the best of knowledge at this stage, will we get back to full time library opening hours by the end of next month? And also, at the moment, various facilities at the Olympia, leisure pool, toddler pool, wave and dive boards are only available at the weekends. And again, is there an indication as to when these will become available during the weekdays as well?
Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. Judy, I'll defer to yourself.
Thanks. Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. The first question in terms of library opening hours, we are absolutely aiming to return to our opening hours towards the end of September. It's been a long, slow process. We've been very careful in terms of risk assessments and safety procedures to make sure we're not doing anything too quickly and putting anybody at unnecessary risk. But that is the intention that we move back towards the group work and the normal activities. In terms of the Olympia, similarly, we're looking at getting services back in there. We're not at this stage yet returning to the full amount of customers that we have in at any time. Again, that's something that we're doing gradually. But we are looking at coming away from online bookings and moving towards being able to just come in. I'm told by the end of next week. So by the beginning of September, we shouldn't need to do online bookings to access services other than those that you would normally have to do.
Okay, thanks for that. The one part about the Olympia, because I wasn't so much asking about how you book and so on, I was more asking about the availability, for example, of the leisure pool back to the sort of times that would normally be available. Because as I understand it from what constituents have said, these are not quite back at where they would normally be.
Yes, that's correct. They're not quite back at where they would be. But we are getting that on track and we should hope in the next week or so to get that back to normal opening.
That's very helpful indeed, Judy. Thanks indeed.
Thanks very much for the question. Are there any other questions to officers before I go to Bailey Keenan? Nope. Okay, Bailey Keenan, you've got an amendment?
Yeah, I'm happy for that to be circulated. I'll just talk through it as it gets sent out to people. And firstly, I think I would also like to commend leisure and culture. I think some of the positives that we've got in there and setting up the Mass Vaccine Centre, you know, excellent, excellent work went on there, that's for sure. I suppose the motion that I put forward or the amendment that I put forward is just really adding an additional point there. And it's looking for a report to come back as quickly as possible produced by the chief exec and the head of leisure and culture to detail the recovery plan and, you know, and give them the opportunity to make a request upon, you know, the city council and indeed partners such as the Dundee Partnership as to how best they would look for that recovery to be. It's really important for all, and I believe that we'd all be in agreement that we're looking to get the numbers back through the door as quickly as, you know, we would probably like to see a greater income coming into leisure and culture. But nevertheless, people using their services is where we want to at least get back to. So hearing that would give that opportunity. And I suppose as we've set up that, or we've encouraged a partnership of the Vaccine Centre getting set up with NHS, perhaps NHS could look towards using our services a bit more by way of social prescribing. So, you know, I throw that into the mix as to where we'd be as trying to get numbers back through the door. But I'm hoping that there would be agreement to the motion or the amendment that I've put forward. It's just really calling for body more detail to councillors about where are we going? And what's the ask of us as to, you know, how best we ensure the recovery and seeing back, the leisure and culture back to normal as quickly as possible.
Thanks very much, Bailey Keenan. I'll let councillor McCready in next to second.
Thanks very much, convener. I mean, I'm hoping that this is not a very controversial idea that Bailey Keenan is putting forward. I think we've all got a duty to do what we can to protect leisure and culture going forward. With leisure and culture Dundee is hugely important to the, to the city of Dundee. It's hugely important in terms of leisure facilities, in terms of sporting facilities, in terms of cultural facilities and indeed in terms of holding the cultural records of our city. I think it's important that we recognise that and the great work that is done. And indeed, you know, we, I'm sure everybody in the committee, everybody in the call will be backing the bid to become the UK City of Culture with the rest of the T cities region. And clearly, leisure and culture Dundee would be right at the heart of those activities when, when, not if Dundee becomes the, T cities become the UK City of Culture. Because I think that's really important and we need to recognise that. There's also no doubt, you know, like the comments I made earlier about waste management, there's no doubt that the pandemic has impacted on leisure and culture. We've got a duty though, I think, to ensure that we do all that we can to make sure that leisure and culture builds back, gets back to where it was before and indeed goes beyond that. I think it would be, you know, it wouldn't be fair to leisure and culture Dundee or indeed to the citizens of Dundee to expect those declines which are set out starkly in paragraph 4.4 of the report to be turned around without a real bit of effort and a real bit of assistance. And I know we've got great officers there in leisure and culture. And I know that the trustees will also be working very hard along with the staff to make sure that leisure and culture Dundee does build back and does bounce back from those declines. But we can't imagine that they will happen just because we wish them to. They clearly need support. They clearly need us to do what we can to help them. It's, you know, it's clear that some people will return to their old habits quickly, but others will be more reticent. So I think it's important that we remember that. It's also important for the committee, I think, to remember that whilst it's at arm's length, leisure and culture Dundee delivers services which Dundee City Council asks them to deliver. That's what the service level agreements are about. If leisure and culture was not, leisure and culture Dundee was not there, then the responsibility would fall to the council. For that reason, we need to be realistic about what is required to assist leisure and culture. And I think it's important that we're realistic about it. Hoping for the best will not necessarily work, but what we need. So I think that's why I would be looking for the report that Bailey Keenan is asking for in the amendment that he's put forward, that we look at what needs to be done, clearly setting out a clear programme of recovery for leisure and culture, giving us as city council an indication of what we need to do. And it might be, some of that might be, I know, and I know that this will be difficult, but, you know, some of that might be financial. Some of it will be in other ways. Some of it will be around lobbying, no doubt. But also what other, what other parts of the Dundee Partnership can help leisure and culture. So I mean, I hope this is not controversial. It's about trying to help leisure and culture. It's about trying to help us get back and it's about, it's about supporting the immensely important cultural and leisure and sporting fabric of our city, which, you know, leisure and culture are looking after on behalf of the city council and on behalf of the citizens of Dundee. So I would hope that people will support the amendment in Bailey Keenan's name and I'm happy to second it. Thanks, convener.
Thanks to both of you for your contribution there. Certainly not controversial. I suppose I want to seek a little bit of clarification just in terms of the specifics within it. I think to me, it's also important that this is a briefing and much more conversational in terms of that dialogue around what the prevailing issues are in that Covid response. I think the caveat that I'm looking for, or certainly would emphasise from my perspective, is that there's no mission creep here. So it is the role of the board and trustees of leisure and culture to spearhead and take forward that work. And I don't think we'd want to be in a position of mandating or demanding that leisure and culture's boards take specific action. So I can see both councillor McCready and Bailey Keenan are kind of shaking their head in agreement on that front. So I think with that caveat, I'm fairly relaxed with the suggestion. Like you say, I would say that it's probably worthwhile having a briefing at the appropriate time to have a bit of a discussion around that. On the financial and other implications of any of the potential proposals that will come forward. And again, at the behest of the board of leisure and culture Dundee, I think it's really important to emphasise. It's worth noting just the fact that we have put some reassurance in place by that letter of comfort to leisure and culture Dundee. And I think that's a real statement of intent in terms of the value that we see in their operations and what they do more broadly for the city. But can I just ask the chief executive in the first instance to come in and just, I suppose, agree with my clarification on the emphasis that it's leisure and culture driving that recovery plan? Greg, can I invite you to agree with me? I think that's the first time I've done that.
Thanks, convener. I think in terms of the responsibility for the recovery plan, I would agree it would be a matter for the board to consider. However, I'm hopeful and assured having had conversations with the managing director and the chair of the board, that they are working on their recovery plans at present. So as you've outlined, that could be fed back to the members of committee by a briefing or by a report. And in addition to that, you touched on the letter of comfort. And councillors, as we progress through the agenda, will note that the revenue monitoring report by the section 95 officer has at the moment three million pounds for supporting leisure and culture Dundee. So I would agree that the board will be responsible for developing that recovery plan. However, I would encourage members to take an oversight and look at how we will recover and what the intention will be for leisure and culture Dundee, not only about how they will recover to get services back as per the pre-pandemic levels, but also around what they've learned that might involve different types of services, how we engage with the community and whether or not there are any new ways of engaging with the public or providing those services to get that wider reach of leisure and culture Dundee. And as Bailey Keenan mentioned, to see if we can forge any further partnerships to help the trust going forward.
Thanks, Greg. That's helpful. And I think just in addition to that, it's also worth mentioning within the capital plan that there are additional funding, there is additional funding, should I say, in terms of new potential opportunities. So with all of that, I think we're in broad agreement on the need to make sure that we're in a good position to take things forward, recover and support the organisation. I think we've been doing that very well. So I don't see any dissenting voices in that regard. So with all of that, can we take that with the additional amendment as agreed? Thank you very much.
Item seven, item seven on the agenda, Brexit update. Again, you have a report before you.
Yeah. Can I again just thank officers for the work on this moving feast, as we say every time we have this Brexit report. As we are continuing to see some of the impacts and those have been referenced earlier this evening, particularly by way of the impact on our capital plan and potential projects moving forward in terms of supply and the cost of some of those goods. I think we're seeing it on an individual basis when I go into B and Q for a bag of cement, never mind at a citywide issue when we're talking about housing development. So the impact is real. There is, of course, still further issues that we need to obtain further clarity on, looking at things like the Community Renewal Fund. And bids have been submitted to that. And of course, this report is remitting officers to continue to look at opportunities to maximise fund of the city from any replacement for EU funds. And I think it's also worth mentioning that with the usual mechanisms for discussion, we did have UK government minister Ian Stewart in attendance at a Scottish Cities Alliance meeting, of which I'm the chair, and raised specific issues and concerns around not only the lack of clarity, but the lack of profile for the city of Dundee in terms of some of those successor fundings, which we have discussed previously, because it's absolutely paramount that the issues in the city are recognised through that EU successor funding and we shouldn't lose out because there's some gerrymandering of the criteria around that, in my humble opinion. And with all of that, I will open it up to members, I think councillor Duncan in the first instance.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Actually, you've touched on one or two things I was going to talk about anyway. So, but I think I would just preface my question by first with saying that, you know, whatever anybody thinks about the merits or demerits of Brexit, it's obviously a massively important issue. And it disturbs me to see in 4.5.1 that apparently, you know, it concerns continue to be expressed about the refusal of the UK government to engage with the Scottish government in any meaningful way. I mean, that simply just disturbs me, you know. So my question really, and again, you've touched upon it, is really the next paragraph around the UK Community Renewal Funds. Now, obviously Dundee has submitted some bids, but there does of course seem to be a kind of vague lack of quality around, we're not in the top 100 apparently. So do we have any idea if our bids are a lightweight to succeed or simply would you need a crystal ball to know that?
I'll defer to officers on the discussions that they've had with their counterparts. But I would say from the discussions, political discussions that I've been involved in, I was giving some assurance, I'm not sure how much assurance I take from it, to be honest, but it's some assurance that just because we didn't feature in the 100 list, doesn't mean that we couldn't bid in and be successful. However, clearly, if you're in the priority list, you are a priority and that will necessitate, I would imagine, more funding. And given the level of issues that we've already discussed tonight by way of poverty, deprivation, drugs, alcohol, there's a whole series of things that we are trying to tackle as a city, which EU successor funding would be absolutely paramount and us taking forward a really bold and ambitious agenda. But I'll defer to Andrea and her discussion. So Andrea, can I invite you in?
I think you've actually just answered what I was going to say was, so it was around the fact that we have been told that despite not being in that top 100, any applications we make will be considered. And I think where we would probably be looking to get more leverage would be under the Shared Prosperity Fund. And recently we've been given updates just saying that there is to be some consultation. But what we're not clear about is when that will be or who that will be with, whether that will be with the Scottish government, local authorities or COSLA. So we continue to keep lobbying and we've raised it again recently with COSLA and they're going to raise it through some of their issues with the Scottish government and UK government as well.
Thanks. Thanks very much for that, Andrea. And I mean, I do sympathise. I mean, I think officers are doing, you know, the best they can with a kind of moving target, you know. You don't really know what you're aiming at. And I can only just say that, you know, this length of time after Brexit, and it's one of the most important things that's going to face this country, whether we like it or not. I mean, that's, that ship is sealed, as it were. But to have this level of, you know, opaqueness and uncertainty such a long time into it is disturbing.
Yeah, I agree with those comments, councillor Duncan. And just to say, sorry, it was remiss of me not to mention that during the discussion through the Scottish Cities Alliance, I also asked Ian Stewart for individual meetings with each of the cities within the alliance. I will be taking the opportunity to sit down with him and articulate, I think, the shared view of city councillors in terms of some of the concerns around the current process and what we would hope would be achieved at the end of the kind of consultative period when they're developing these things. And I will invite Robin just to come in because I think he's probably asking to come in on a specific point. And then I'll move to councillor Dawson. Robin?
Thanks very much, convener. Just to pick up the point around the Community Renewal Fund specific. We did check last week and there is no answer yet, but the external funding network that we participate in believes that the answer could be imminent on the Community Renewal Fund and we obviously submitted a strong bid. So we're hopeful that at least one of those will be supported.
Thanks. And members will obviously be updated if they are successful. Councillor Dawson?
Just to say my internet is starting to buffer quite badly, so if I sound like a robot, I do apologise. But convener, I think you've picked up on quite a fair bit of what I actually was going to say. But for me, it's still likely beggars' belief that we're still sitting here today not fully understanding what the fundscape, sorry, the funding landscape will be post Brexit. And, you know, Andrea has just picked up on the part about the Shared Prosperity Fund. We were supposed to have been consulted on this, you know, it must be come up for two years ago now. I think, as far as I know, the consultation is still sitting on a shelf in Whitehall with layers and layers of dust on it. But one thing that I've seen today, and I don't know if officers have any updates on it, is in relation to the settlement scheme. There's a top London law firm who are saying that there's potentially 80,000 people could lose their right to stay in the UK through flaws in the system, which is, you know, even if it comes down from that number, it's still a potentially huge amount of people who could be facing some severe issues in relation to housing, employment and even being ejected from the country in many respects. Is there anything, Andrea, that you've heard, I suppose, in relation to that that we maybe need to plan for and lines of extra support for people who may come to us who are facing these issues?
Thanks, well. Andrea?
Yeah, so thanks for that question. We have been looking at that in a bit of detail recently. So we have put in place support through our advice services, but also with Brooks Banks. And so we've updated our website just to let people know some of the implications of the late application process, but also the implications if people don't apply. The issue that is all local authorities are facing is we don't actually know who hasn't applied yet. We've done obviously a lot of work over the last two years, targeting every possible route. So I think we've probably gone over and above what other local authorities did. You know, we've sent out all the notices with council tax bills, we've sent frequent notifications out all through our schoolchildren and obviously through the Dundee Partnership and all the other routes. And we've targeted some of the most vulnerable groups. So our care experienced young people we've looked after and so looked at targeting older residents. So I think we've done a great deal of work and we've tried to support people get their settled status. But we now have the process in place for the late application and will continue to work with people where we find that they've not applied. I think some of our concerns will be that people won't find out that they need their settled status until certain life events happen. And one of our concerns is for young people who are relying on their parents to sort out their settled status. And what would happen maybe if young people don't know that they should have had settled status? But we're doing a lot, still doing a lot of communications on that just now.
No, thanks. As I say, this is just a report that seems to have come out today that's highlighting what could be described as fatal flaws in the settlement scheme process. So, you know, it's good to hear that we're wise to it. So, you know, it's good to hear that we're wise to it, but I think we might find, you know, maybe a few sticky situations with some people over the next coming months. So thank you.
Thanks very much for the question. I think that's everyone. So can I take that as the item being agreed? Thank you very much. Tracy?
Item eight on the agenda, capital expenditure monitoring 2021-22. This is for noting.
Again, I think it's self-explanatory and we've already touched upon the fact that I think the current capital programme, especially over the next year, is going to be fairly challenging, given global supply chain issues, sourcing of materials, the pandemic, Brexit and all of the other issues in terms of the economic realities we're facing just now. So with all of that, I'll just move straight to questions. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, Convena. In fact, what you said there slightly touches on my question, which is around the narrative at five point six point two in relation to the term centre fund, which indicates that the estimated completion date for the 2019, 20 and 2021 programmes is this October, which is obviously a matter of a couple of months away. Thirty first October is probably not, yes, but a couple of months away, isn't it? And if I go then to the statistics appendix two on page 197, I see that at the 30th of June, out of a projected out term for 2122, 531,000, only 87,000 had actually been spent. And so now I appreciate the 30th of June is also a couple of months the other direction. And my question is really twofold. One is where are we now? In other words, are officers confident there's good progress being made? Is the October completion date actually realistic? And what I would also be very grateful for, I think it would be helpful. I think we're all very, very keen to ensure that our city centre and indeed our district shopping centres bounce back well from what has been hugely, hugely challenging for the retail and related sectors. And I was just really wondering if we could perhaps, and it's not for tonight, and answer the questions on the budget are for tonight, but what would be really, really helpful is something circulated as to what things have been, has the fund been used thus far for? And what's still to be delivered with the remaining funding?
Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. I'm sure that can be provided after the meeting. I can see Robert wants to come in, so I'll invite him in in the first instance. Robert?
Thanks, Chair. You've already alluded, I think, to the challenge in delivering the programme this year. And I think, you know, the progress as of the first quarter isn't huge. So we're doing a careful piece of work at the moment, looking at what we can realistically deliver during the course of the next, the rest of the year. There is an ambitious programme that we're trying to deliver, but I think we are at risk of slippage for some of the reasons you outlined in your introduction. I don't know whether colleagues in city development have got an update on the specific town centre projects, but otherwise we can get a response to Bailey McPherson after the meeting.
Thanks very much, Robert. Robin?
Convena, happy to give a reply on that. I think the June low outturn is simply a legacy issue. I think all of the projects, I believe, are now on site. Many of them have been completed. To remind members, it was a basket of things, including two public art projects, upgrading the pens into city square, the street furniture in Reform Street, and then a series of interventions to improve public realm in areas of key footfall around the city. So I think the public realm is the last thing to be completed on. So that's either on site or going on site shortly. So I think the end date will be achieved, but happy to supply more information after the meeting.
I'm grateful for that. Obviously, I think we have seen some of the progress that Mr Presswood alludes to. And the pens leading to city square, that's a jolly good job, isn't it? But the, you know, I would be very grateful for the further information from Mr Presswood and that's appreciated. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Okay, I think it's Bailey Keenan next.
Good. Thanks, Convena. Maybe officers will not have an answer for this this evening, so I'm quite happy to receive it at some other time soon. Six point one point one in relation to site conditions at Whitfield and how it will delay the affordable housing project that's going to be proposed, that is proposed up there. And they're suggesting that there'll be a new planning application and the like coming forward. So that would suggest to me considerable changes that may add or may not add to considerable costs. So I'd like some detail on that. I'd like some detail as well as to what are the difficult site conditions and whether we had any influence in them as we knocked down most of Whitfield? Given that, you know, we probably have been responsible for a lot of the brownfield sites that are in the town. So are we leaving them in the best place for redevelopment? And then indeed, are we looking at that with others? Because obviously in relation to contaminated land and the like, we do investigations on that ourselves on other sites. So I'd welcome some greater explanation of that narrative that's in six point one point one.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. I think it's a very pertinent question. And I probably alluded to some of the challenges earlier on, looking at issues like suns drainage and, you know, some of the prevailing issues. And you would have seen some of the coverage more recently around flooding and the impact of that. And I think we've got to recognise that the climate is changing and that has an impact on when we're planning these things. But your question is absolutely the right one in terms of reviewing and assessing each of those sites to ensure that we know what we're getting into when we start these conversations. But Robyn, do you want to come in and add some context? And, you know, if there's some follow-up information you can circulate to all members, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, I don't have any information on that specific, but I'll work with Mr Simpson to provide that.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, there's no other questions on this item, so can I take that as agreed? Thank you. Tracy?
The final item on the agenda, item nine, revenue monitoring 2021-22. You have a report before you.
Again, I think it's fairly self-explanatory and sets out some of the context and variations. So I'll just go straight to questions. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, Convena. My question's about the narrative at six point seven and the information contained in appendix B on page 217. It's about neighbourhood services underspend. Now, we've alluded already tonight to the challenges of staff being absent for very understandable reasons and so on in the past few months. The 657,000 underspend, if you go to page 217, very, very large part of that is down to slippage due to unfilled posts, 414,000, according to the information appendix B. And I was just really wondering what progress there is in relation to that, particularly given the challenges the department's faced in relation to staff absence.
Thanks very much for the question, Bailey McPherson. And I'll not surprise you to hear that that's similar questions that have already been asked. So I know that there is an active recruitment process underway, but I'll just invite Elaine to comment on the specifics.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson, and thank you, Convena. Yes, I can confirm that the pandemic has had a significant impact on recruitment, but we are now opening that up and trying to get those jobs filled as quickly as possible. And there is an active push on recruiting.
And I'm just really wondering, given that, you know, there's an active push, which is welcome. Do you have any anticipated timescales when this 414,000 will be sitting at, say, under a quarter of that?
Elaine?
I'm certainly happy to get back to Bailey McPherson on that particular question.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. Thanks very much for that.
Okay, thank you. Bailey Keenan next. Sorry, Bailey Keenan, before I invite you in, I did just see Greg's hand go up trying to monitor both. So Greg, if you want to come in on the specifics around the question that was just asked, happy to let you in at this point.
Thanks, Convena. It was just in response to Bailey McPherson's question, just to say that generally, due to having a period of time where there was significantly and quite a reduction in recruitment, we have been trying to manage the flow of that and prioritise recruitment through the system. So as Mrs Worley's outlined, there is a degree of push through for those posts. Your question about whether we'll recover it, well, that depends on the level of recruitment that we do. Because if we've had that period of time of six months where there hasn't been any recruitment, we're unlikely to get ahead of that unless we doubled the number of people. So officers continue to look at options that they've got, particularly in the area that you've mentioned, Bailey McPherson, which has been discussed tonight by other elected members.
Grateful for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Sorry, Bailey Keenan, I'll defer to you now.
No problem. Probably a couple of points in relation to the voluntary retirement scheme that's got three and a half million against it. I would hope, given that we've had a pandemic and we've seen the flexibility of our workforce, that we'll be reporting towards the end of the year, that that wasn't spent or considerable amounts of it weren't spent. Given that, you know, people have demonstrated that level of flexibility, I hope that it's something that we could tap forward in the organisation. And obviously, we carry considerable job slippage and or staff slippages that might not suggest that that's something that we need. Taking into account, of course, that what we've looked at and what we've been told in various capital projects tonight is that capital expenditure is likely to creep up. And I understand is that three and a half million can only either go on paying some of the capital debt or otherwise, or use it on redundancy because of the flexibility the government allowed. So, you know, it would go to good use within the capital budget. The other question that I raised in relation to the underspends in supplying services, and it suggests that within the 504,000 on page 217, that there was skip hire in there. And I'm wondering whether that is something that we're looking at as to whether we would, when that comes back on stream and there is a need for that, it's something that can be delivered by our environmental services? Given that, you know, Labour's budget the last time was to look towards how we would best expand some of the environmental services that were offered and try to attract work in the private sector, given the rates that we could achieve going into Dero. And I'm just wondering whether there is an opportunity there that we potentially shouldn't have missed out on, given that we should be looking to start as much money around our own pot as we can.
Thanks for those questions. I'll invite officers. And just to say on the first point around VER, I don't think that will be unspent. And there's a number of reasons for that. I think certainly anecdotally from some of the conversations I've had with members of council staff who are slightly older than myself and approaching retirement age, there has been a review, I suppose, in some senses of their circumstances. And I think they've seen how that balance, work-life balance, might have changed significantly over the last couple of years because of Covid. And for some people, that might necessitate, and I know for a fact it has, some of them looking for early retirement rather than that flexible working. However, you're right, for some folk, flexible working will be a much better end result. But I don't think we can be blind to the fact that there will be individual members of staff that will still be seeking that as an opportunity. And I think the context is still important. We're still in that recovery. We are still challenged financially and, you know, uncertain times lay ahead. And also the demographic of the workforce remains fairly challenging. And I think the stat that always rings in my ears is 5% of our workforce is under the age of 30. And I think we do need to get that balance right. There is great assets in having that experienced workforce. But also the point that you just made in terms of opportunities for staff going forward is one that we need to be live to. On the second point around supplying services, if officers don't have information, we'll obviously get that circulated. But I'll invite Robert in in the first instance. Robert?
Thank you, Convena. You've probably said most of what I was going to say. The only observation I'll make is we only have flexibility in this financial year for the use of that three and a half million, just to be aware of that. And obviously, we're monitoring that and that'll come forward. But obviously, we've got next year's budget before then. We don't know what that's going to look like.
Okay, thanks very much. And in terms of the detail around Kevin's specific question on skips supplying services, can officers perhaps follow that up? I'm not expecting you to have the detail to hand, but yeah, I can see officers nodding, Kevin. So we'll get that emailed over to you.
Cheers. Thank you.
I think that's the last question on that item. So can I take that as this report being agreed? Thank you very much. Thank you all for your participation, your questions and your contributions. Have a good week and we shall see you for the next round of committees. Take care.
Good night.
Thanks, Convena.